Good morning, I am Robert Stokes Chairman of Education Workforce Youth Committee. Today, Bill Number CC 22 dash zero two two one. Let's be, I'd like to introduce the members of the committee from the Seventh District, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
From the Sixth District, our Vice President of City Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullatt, Member of the Committee Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also, we have Nikki Thompson from President Mosby's office, also from the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mayhew, Sophia G., and Committee Staffperson is Larry Green here, who staffed this, great job. So, before we start, I just want to get some open remarks real quick. This legislation was introduced by me in March of 2022. It provides key inclusive measures to ensure that city retirees and those eligible for retirement are fully representative and benefit program decisions and proceedings. More specifically, this legislation would require the city to create a city health and prescription drug benefits program that covers active employees, retirees, spouses, and dependents of employees, and gives the retirees a seat at the table with the city's health insurance committee, requires information sharing of the program data to evaluate program costs and proposed premium rates, increases number of meetings of the HRC to include retirees as participants, and finally, it creates standard accounting principles for the program. I look forward to the discussion in committee and appreciate my colleagues' support and feedback on this legislation. Thank you so much. So, we are going to start, we ask everybody who's speaking to come up to the podium, and you can actually remove your mask when you're speaking. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, I gotta start with the agency reports, I'm moving a little fast here. Okay, Department of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, distinguished members of the committee. My name is Quentin Herbert, I'm the Director of Human Resources. In addition to the information that was submitted in my bill report, I would just like to very briefly outline more of the specifics behind the opposition that was submitted by the Department of Human Resources. I believe that to fully understand why the DHR opposes this bill, we have to understand how the health benefit was provided pre-2020 and how it looks today. Before 2020, the, we, the city had what's called a blended rate, meaning that the-
Director, real quick, you can go and finish, but we only want to tell you if it's favorable or opposed, that's all we need to do, we don't, so if you're unfavorable, opposed to it, that's all we want you to report back.
I understand, Mr. Chair, but I think that the record should reflect respectfully why the city is, why the DHR is opposing the legislation. I don't think that it's outside of the bounds of this forum, this public forum, that we should be able to express why the bill report says what it says.
But we have written reports from your, from your agency, and we can share with the rest of the members here.
I understand, but the bill report, Mr. Chair, respectfully, the bill report was very, it wasn't a comprehensive report, and I was going to provide some of the background that was not necessarily in the report.
Okay, but after you do your report, all I want is, whether you're opposed or unopposed-
Understood, understood.
How I chair my meetings like that.
Understood, sir.
So, I'm just being clear, you can talk about it, but the next reports from other agencies, I want them to mention either they oppose or whatever they report, no position, that's all I want to hear.
I understand, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm just, I'm a bit confused because I don't understand how, and this is a public forum, I'm not understanding how the, your colleagues can make an informed decision if-
Sir, this discussion is about your report, I'm not, we're not going to be debating in this, in this forum, like, about that. This is a report, we asking for agency reports, that's it.
And that's what I was, that's what I was doing, sir.
You trying to debate me talking about my colleagues, we talking about agency reports, that's all I want to talk about is agency reports.
Understood, may I, may I give the agency report, sir?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Again, I think that pre-2020, the city had what's called a blended health report, a blended health plan, and in that blended health plan, both retirees and actives contributed. The city received substantial subsidies from Medicare for its retirees. Those subsidies were applied to the program at large, which meant that, in essence, the retirees were subsidizing the rates of the actives, and if we look back at the health rates from 2016, 17, and 18, in particular, some of our surrounding jurisdictions saw double-digit increases to their healthcare rates, while Baltimore City remained flat, or in one, in 2018, 2017, there was actually a premium holiday as a result of those, that subsidizing by the retirees. In 2020, the retirees were moved into what's called a Medicare Advantage Plan, an MAPD Plan, where that is a fully funded program, it's not self-funded by the city, and so the retirees pay their own premium that pays their plan, the medical vendor receives the subsidies from Medicare, they no longer pass through the city. As a result, those savings are passed on to the retirees, and in the first year retirees saw a 20% reduction in their premiums. Now, actives did see a slight increase, but of course, that is because they were no longer being subsidized by the retirees. The HIC Committee gives labor a seat at the table to discuss all of those issues that are subject to collective bargaining, where rates are set, et cetera. The issues that we highlighted in our bill report with respect to this legislation is, and I'll, I'll try to be very brief and go with the highlights, Section 11 dash three essentially gives labor the decision-making vote on the HIC. With a majority vote, labor would essentially administer the health benefit, the city would no longer have that majority vote. And I think it's worth noting that the city finances health benefits at either 80% for those who have the traditional Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO Plan, and 90% for those who have an HMO Plan. So, the city overwhelmingly is on the hook for the cost for the medical benefit and prescription drug benefit. Section 11 dash five, it essentially makes the, makes labor a co-administrator of the health benefit. It creates a binding right to arbitration over, and I quote, "any dispute about the meaning or application of any part or provision of this article." This may be unenforceable at law, as the party subject to arbitration for the denial of benefits would most likely be a medical health provider who is not consented to arbitration with labor. Moreover, the Anarundel County statute that is relied upon in our labor partner's response to our opposition explicitly states, "Nothing in six dash one dash 308 shall convey to an exclusive employee representative any right to demand or participate in binding arbitration over employees, employer subsidies for or components of health insurance plans except as authorized under eight dash 12 of the charter," meaning that the right to collective bargaining that the charter gives them. Here in the city, the Municipal Employee Labor Relations Article gives our labor stakeholders the right to negotiate and to go to arbitration over terms and conditions of employment, which health insurance is one. Also, it creates a binding right to arbitration for retirees. This is unique to, would be unique to Baltimore City, it is not a right that retirees enjoy in any of our surrounding jurisdictions. I will say that Baltimore City is unique in that Baltimore City, unlike any of our surrounding jurisdictions, we inherit retirees that we don't employ. Let me explain what I mean. Noneducational employees of the school system, when they retire, they become Baltimore City retirees, they're on our health benefit, which is why today the city has over 10,000 employees and over 14,000 retirees in our program. We're upside down right now because we inherit those retirees. And in the definition of retiree, this proposed legislation seems, seems to leave those non-city employed retirees out of the equation, which means there could be an inequity issue where we would be treating retirees differently. I would also state that Section 11 dash eight of the proposed legislation appears to, and it may require proprietary work product of our actuarial vendor, because it gets into their formularies and how they arrive at the rates, and not just the data that they used. Section 11 dash nine, again, it creates an additional collective bargaining requirement with retirees, and Section 11 dash nine subsection C forbids any increase to any premium post-retirement, which, the way that I read that, means that once a person retires, their premium can never be touched, which, as we all know, health insurance rates are set by the market. We could have a system where if I, Quentin Herbert, retired today, my premium could be X, but retiree that retires tomorrow, their premium could be Y, and that would create a system that is quite frankly untenable and unworkable. As I, as I surrender my time, I would just like to note also that, as I mentioned earlier, the number of employees and retirees that Baltimore County has, there's a lot of weight given to what's done in Anarundel County and Baltimore County. I would say that Baltimore County presently provides life and health benefits to 6,600 active employees and 4,800 retirees, meaning that we have more retirees than Baltimore County has actives and retirees. We have more actives than Baltimore County has actives and retirees. And Anarundel County is an even smaller jurisdiction, because they have 40,000, 40,000 residents, and their, their employee base is much smaller than even that of Baltimore County. Again, when we look at jurisdictions that we are more similar to, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, even DC government, we don't see this type of legislation. I believe that it would have an adverse impact on our ability to continue the work that we've done to fund OPEB, and to make sure that those who are young now and will retire will have a health benefit to retire to. And with that, I would submit on our bill report, thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair, and for the record, DHR opposes this legislation.
Thank you. Baltimore City Retirement System, no position?
No.
Fire Police Department, no position?
No.
Hello?
No.
Okay. Department of Law, unfavorable?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Finance Department, unfavorable?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Finance Department, unfavorable? Who's here from the Finance Department?
Good morning, Yvonne Mosetti's Finance, we are in opposition, and, Mr. Chairman, if we were able to make a few comments?
Sure.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to address the members of this council and yourself today. I think Director Herbert did a great job of providing overview of where we were and why this presents challenges going forward, and I think I'm hearing kind of three main things that I want to talk about very quickly first. One, we all have the same goal, we want employees and retirees to have strong benefits, we want folks to be able to be healthy and to use the plans and get the care they need for themselves and their families. We want employees and retirees to pay a fair contribution, and finally, the plans offered, or that we choose to offer, we want them to be sustainable, now and in the future, and that's really what Director Herbert had addressed, right? We were at a point in 2010 where the costs weren't sustainable. In fact, between 2005 and 2010, the city's cost of providing medical and drug benefits had grown by 69 million, that's about 40% from where we were, and so in that context, the city made changes to healthcare plans and looked both at short-term things like employee benefit audits to make sure that the people receiving the benefits were entitled, and long-term changes, and you see in the testimony that was submitted that we outlined some of those changes, and of course, those changes are ongoing, but these changes occurred in the context of that partnership and collaboration with the Health Insurance Committee, and I think Director Herbert covered, but the city's ability to make changes to the healthcare plan design and cost shares are, it's a really important thing to maintain, and we do that in conjunction with the Health Insurance Committee. These changes are talked about, the feedback is taken into account, but under this legislation, once a retiree enters a plan, the city would be unable to change it. You could presumably have multiple plans, and that leads to other fiscal and operational burdens. Locking in plans, as this legislation proposes, limits our ability to contain cost in the future, it limits the benefits of economies of scale, right? When we bargain for plans with a larger group of people that we're counting as being covered, we get lower rates, and it also results in incalculable expenses for the city, and thus, the Department of Finance opposes this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had asked for a moment to make comments for the Law Department.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just wanted to let, quickly note that there are three big issues with this bill from the legal perspective. First of all, it's outside the scope of the city council's powers in Article Two that are granted by the General Assembly. The bill also conflicts with the charter authority of the Board of Estimates, where it creates the fund, as well as when it's giving authority to determine use of that fund, and with regard to the multiple provisions that discuss disclosure of documents, that that is preempted by the Maryland Public Information Act, any disclosure of governmental documents has to be done pursuant to that law, and in this case, there is actually a provision that suggests that we can expand the scope of that law locally, which we cannot do. So, I just think it's important for everybody to understand that there are some serious legal limitations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Department of Health, no position?
Yes, no position, we defer to DHR.
The Office of Labor, unfavorable, did you want some comments?
Good morning, sir. Deborah Moore Carter from the Office of the Labor Commissioner, the Office of the Labor Commissioner opposes, as I won't repeat what Director Herbert or Ms. Mosetti said, but I will say that this seeks to change Article 12, which is the Labor Relations Ordinance, which defines an employee as someone who holds a position, and then, in the same article, we're talking about retirees who no longer hold a position, but I think it's even more important to talk about how we got here, and what, talking about health insurance, we had agreements with the union, we had a, an initial agreement that we negotiated with all of the unions, there are only two people in this room who were a part of that initial agreement, that's me and Joel Smith. We negotiated with all the unions, came up with a three-year agreement, which modified health insurance, which benefited the city and employees, reestablished the Health Insurance Committee. Then, we had a transition agreement, which superseded, after, once the original agreement expired, we had a transition agreement, and then, we had a third agreement, and we were working on a fourth, so I was really surprised where, in lieu of negotiations, that we are here, but the Office of the Labor Commissioner stands committed to negotiate with the unions to, to talk about health insurance and any other term and condition of employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to start with our public testimony, and our first speaker, Mr. Frank Boston, could you come up to the podium, please, and you can remove your mask when you're speaking.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I'm Frank Boston III, I am the Legislative Attorney, lobbyist if you will, for the Coalition of the Baltimore City Employee Unions and Retirees. Thank you, Chairman Stokes, and co-sponsors for sponsoring this bill. With the exception of myself and Iri Plout, this bill protects every single member in this room, including those who testified against it. The bill provides the rules, the infrastructures, the guidelines for negotiation, that's it. It gives all parties a clear, bright line to go forward in the future with. It gives protections for retirees, which all of you will be one day. There have been agreements made by Department of Human Service, Human Relations, and the Labor Commissioner, Department, Office of the Labor Commissioner, that have not been followed through on, and that's why we need this bill, so the rules don't change in the middle of the game. The city states that the system works well in the written testimony, so if that's the case, why don't we just codify it, codify it and make it clear for everyone? As already mentioned, similar jurisdictions that have this type of legislation are very close, Baltimore County and Anarundel County. Another fact you should know, this bill affects 10,500 active employees and 14,000 retirees and their families, their dependents. Every member that I am here today representing have put their blood, sweat, and tears out for the city. That's why they work here, and that's why they have retired from here. This bill and this hearing is uncomfortable for everyone, why? It's because we're all supposed to be on the same team. We respectfully ask for a favorable report. A couple of things I'd like to mention, you should have a letter from Pamela Shaw, who is actually unable to be here today because she's doing other city business, she is a recent ERS retiree who worked in that parole for over 20 years, it should be a part of the record, if not-
Yes, we have, and we make sure to be part of it.
Cool, and I also like to mention that Glenn Middleton is not able to be here today, he is in strong support of this bill, and he will be represented by Dorothy Bryant, who will be giving testimony on behalf of ASME. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Joel Smith, who is our, the attorney for the Coalition of the Baltimore City Employees Unions and Retirees. Thank you.
It's always my glasses and my mask. I got the mask off. Chairman Stokes and members of the committee, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to appear before you today to talk about this very important bill.
Mr. Smith, before you start, I'm sorry, I want to recognize Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District Membership Committee, you can proceed.
I, myself, have worked for and on behalf of Baltimore City employees since 1982, representing and collective bargaining at various points in time, unions, including the IFF locals, both locals, all ASME locals, Cub, who I helped form many years ago, and also the Baltimore Teachers Union, but I speak today on behalf of the Coalition of all city unions speaking together. The purpose of Bill 22 to 11 is to codify the system that we've had in place since 2012, which, as the Labor Commissioner acknowledged, we bargained and have fashioned together, and in her statement today, and I thank her for her statement today, her written testimony, she noted how extraordinarily, extremely effective the Health Insurance Committee system has been, since it was established in 2012. The authority of the city to effect a Health Insurance Committee and to permit it to operate flows not from the sections of the code or charter mentioned by the deputy solicitor, but by Article Two, Section 52 of the City Charter, which specifically authorizes the city to engage in collective bargaining with exclusive representatives, and the city council to pass necessary legislation to effectuate that collective bargaining process. As, as the parties have already acknowledged today, the process of negotiation involving benefits for city employees has affected both city employees and retirees, and provisions affecting both city employees and retirees have appeared in the Memorandum of Understanding since at least the period of 1976. I've found provisions that refer to benefits both to active employees and retirees, so the city has long adopted the procedure of using collective bargaining as a means to define the benefits of both active employees and retirees. The purpose of this bill is to make the system sustained and sustainable, and to provide a process for the purpose of effectuating negotiations. It's not intended, as the city's agencies contend, to provide for specific benefits or specific types of benefit or formula, that's the outcome of the process, the outcome of the process, which is subject to the authority of the Board of Estimates in its ordinary annual processes. The legislative process, however, requires that we recognize currently that the HIC system is not without its problems and not without different flaws in it. We've had a number of situations in which there are hiccups that are far more than incidental, which need to be cured and need to be cured now through legislation. There are four principal reasons why we urge you to carefully consider and affirmatively recommend 22 to 11. First, the city has frequently exhibited reluctance or delay in providing and sharing adequate information on healthcare. The city law office blocked a requested, a request for information in calendar year 2013, we eventually worked that out. The city, again, failed to account for and provide year-end reconciliations in calendar year 2016, which ended in arbitration, which I cite in my written materials to you, in 2017, in which an arbitrator found after writing a 45-page decision that the city had fundamentally failed in providing full disclosure and necessary disclosure as to surpluses and fluctuations in health benefit programs. Second, a second reason that we need this legislation is that the city has failed to recognize specifically retirees as stakeholders, it's failed to accord them a seat at the table in the Health Insurance Committee, despite the fact that on April 15, 2019, this body, as Council Bill 19 oh forty, 147, in its resolution specifically directed the city and the mayor to permit retirees and their organization to have a seat at the table in the city's Health Insurance Committee. A third reason is that the city has failed to honor promises made to retirees, specifically in the past. In November 7, 2007, the Board of Estimates adopted a graduated retiree contribution schedule for retirees intending to recognize, and I quote, "to reward employees for employment, longevity, and city government," in other words, "for their long service upon retirement." And in 1990, and, 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 in subsequent years, in, in 2021, a change was adopted to eliminate or revise the guaranteed retiree contribution schedule contrary to the promise made back in 2007, which had long been honored. A fourth flaw is that the sale, city has failed to be open and to maintain and fund a premium stabilization fund, which is referred to in the HIC agreements, we've been referred to in each successive iteration of the HIC agreement, the city has failed to separately set up that fund, it's failed- It's failed to account for that premium stabilization fund. And it, we appear that there is reported surplus in 2020, which it has failed and refused to account for, to provide a deposit in the premium stabilization fund. The stabilization fund, by the way, is the kind of thing, kind of vehicle that Anarundale County has established and established specifically and recognized in the kind of legislation that the Director of DHR referred to in his testimony. So the purpose of this legislation is not to provide specific benefits or not to cabin specific terms or conditions. The purpose of this legislation, the reason we urge you to report favorably on it, is to provide rules of the road for a process to stabilize and make sure that the health insurance plan is sustainable, both for current city employees and for retirees as we move into the future. And absent any questions, I would.
No questions.
My comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker's coming up. We, you have two minutes. Antoinette Ryan Johnson, President of City Union of Baltimore.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I am Antoinette Ryan Johnson, President of the City Union of Baltimore. And with me today, behind me, I have Mr. James Carroll, Vice President of the City Union of Baltimore 800R, our retiree chapter. I stand before you today in support of Bill 22-0211, representing the members of Local 800 and 800R. As we all know, at some point in time, we will each retire from city government. Thus, this bill should be important to everyone in this room. Retirees and their dependents are a huge part of the city constituency, and they are just as important to the HIC as active employees are. It has been documented and acknowledged by the city that there have been, there has been a cost saving since the inception of the HIC Committee. This says to me that this structure has proven fruitful over time, but I want to ensure that we continue to have a representative seat at the table for our actors and our retirees. I ask for a favorable report.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Nosak, retiree, former president of firefighters.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the city council. Let me introduce myself. My name is Tom Nosak. I spent 31 years in the Baltimore City Fire Department. I was 18 years as the vice president. And I was a member of the HIC Committee for over 14 years. Let me first say I am in support of Bill 22-0211. And the reason is, it works. The HIC Committee works. As Frank Boston had said, everybody in this room is getting a salary, a pension, or healthcare benefits from the city of Baltimore. It's a no-brainer. Keep us at the, at the seat with the HIC Committee. A couple of things we mentioned. There's three people in here currently that I remember that were members of the HIC Committee. Ms. Dorothy Bryant, Dan Fickus, and I think Glenn Middleton's listening virtually. These are very important topics to us. We want to keep going on. I did look at the testimony from the Department of Finance, and they talk about the prescription plan we looked at in 2010 and also the new Medicare plan, Medicare, Medicare Advantage Plan. That was all brought to the table by the unions. And the city benefited and the employees benefited. And we saved millions of dollars. Let's continue that run. Let's put us on that, let's support this bill, and we can keep working together. Thank you, members. Appreciate the time to talk.
Thank you. Mike Mancuso, President, FOP Lodge 3.
My name is Mike Mancuso. I'm the President of Baltimore City Fraternal or Police Lodge 3, the labor union representing the rank-and-file members of the Baltimore Police Department, both active and retired. I would like to thank Councilman Stokes, Committee Chair, and all of the other council members on this committee for having us here today. I've been President, FOP 3, for four years and a member of the Health Insurance Committee during that time. Early on in my association, I found the HIC process to be collaborative, a collaborative effort between the unions and the city that was effective in protecting everyone's interests. The process had structure and was respected by all. Over the last couple of years, however, the process began to break down because various city agencies stopped adhering to the accepted practices. I agree with the other union leaders here this morning that this bill is necessary to ensure that there is structure and order to the HIC process, ensuring that our members, both active and retired, are protected for years to come. All of the unions represented here today have members who have left their blood, sweat, and tears on the streets of Baltimore for the betterment of us all. And they should be respected for their service to the citizens of Baltimore. And I don't say that lightly. I've been in my 34 years. I've been to many police fire funerals, been to many hospital visits for all union workers. We need your support. Ask all of you, on behalf of FOP 3s, over 4,000 members, and the thousands of other Baltimore union workers, to support this bill, as it will have a lasting positive effect for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next testimony is Darrell Burnham. President of Baltimore Retired Police Benevolent Association.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman and folks at the city council. Excuse me. My name's Darrell Burnham. I'm President of Baltimore Retired Police Benevolent Association, which is a organization comprised of retired city police officers. We go from patrolmen all the way up to retired police commissioners. We have an organization of about 1,700 members, plus their spouses, and over 400 widows. When I joined the police department, Baltimore City, in 1982, 72, I'm sorry, senior moment, I was informed that I would have a salary, I would become a millionaire, I would have healthcare the rest of my life, and a pension. And over the years, we had to fight for our pension, and we prevailed in that respect. My concern is about, we have a lot of members who are older, and like me, I got injured on the line of duty, and a lot of these folks cannot go out and get a job if they had to to go out and seek a second, and, employment to help with their healthcare costs. I mean, nothing's stopping anybody from going out in the open market and getting healthcare. But when you get older, the price is astronomical, and we couldn't afford it. And again, I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you consider in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Dan Fickus, retiree, former President, FOP Lodge 3.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Name is Stan Fickus, retired, 35 years from the police department. I also wear several hats. I'm a past president of the FOP, and I sit on the Board of Governors for the Retired Police Benevolent Association. In the necessity of time, I concur with the testimony of all my committee members. But I would like to reinforce that notion with some brief observations. Mr. Herbert's testimony is lacking. The current healthcare program is dysfunctional, dysfunctional. And as stated, the human, the human resources department has failed or refused to be fair and transparent with information sharing and meeting timely matters, mandates. But more importantly, DHR's dismissal of a city council resolution affecting retirees only expresses their disregard for post-employment employees. To clarify, April 2019, this chamber met its capacity with retirees when the city council resolution 190147 was introduced. That is a resolution that afforded retirees a seat on the healthcare insurance committee. That was passed with only one descending vote. The council then recognized the significance of affording retirees a seat on the healthcare insurance committee. And I believe that attitude still prevails. Retirees just want participation equally with their active partners. Unfortunately, this has not occurred, as DHR has elected to ignore Resolution 190147. I ask you, how demeaning to those who have devoted their entire adult lives in serving the citizens and city of Baltimore not to be afforded participation in one of the most basic human rights, healthcare. Decisions rendered today only affect, not only affect every active employee, post-employment employee, and their dependents, but will directly impact healthcare for you members of this committee and every other council member. Mr. Chairman, committee members, I ask your support on this bill.
Thank you. Rich Langford, President of Firefighters.
Good morning, Council Chairman and City Council Members. My name is Rich Langford, President of Baltimore Firefighters IAF Local 734. I represent 1,200 active members of the Baltimore City Fire Department and another 800 retirees. I've come before you today, on behalf of my membership, to offer and ask your support for the employee-retirees healthcare reform legislation introduced by Councilman Stokes. Healthcare is a very important tool to not only attract employees, but also retain them. As you're aware, my members deal with many dangerous incidents, day in and day out, that have the possibility of causing short and long-term healthcare issues. Healthcare is a very important part of the bargaining process, and it has always been. Over the years, the Health Insurance Committee has found ways to save the city tens of millions of dollars. This legislation does not look to change much on the way things are currently done, but only to strengthen that process. It gives all city employees a peace of mind that their healthcare is protected, not only as an active employee, but even more importantly, as a retired employee. The old saying, "As a happy employee, is a productive employee." With that being said, I encourage you to offer favorable support of this legislation. Show all active and retired employees that you value them. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spiller, AFL-CIO.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, committee members. My name is Michael Spiller. I am the acting president of the Metropolitan Baltimore AFL-CIO. And I'm here today to speak in support of this bill, but not just because of labor, but also because I had the privilege of working with a similar bill like this, or committee like this, for years in Baltimore County. There is called a Healthcare Review Committee. And it consists of an agent from every, a representative from every union, the Labor Commissioner and the Insurance Commissioner for Baltimore County. And for years, they have met and negotiated everything from cost containment to plan design, to when they, when they decided to switch from Blue Cross, they met with the unions. We looked at all the financial information, all the different benefits, and we were able to change the plan design. And also, we were able to implement things to help save costs. So I think it's very important that the labor unions be a part of any type of, and we have retirees on there, of any type of healthcare changes. Also, we are the people who know how to best save. We know what, 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 what the cost containments are. We can get out to our members and educate them. And I think these committees are very important, so I urge you guys to support this bill, because I think it's going to not only save you money in the long run, but also it allows for your members and your employees to be, have an input in what happens with their healthcare. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Dorothy Bryant, ASME, Vice President of Local 44. Can you pull the mic down a little bit, too?
Councilman Stokes, Stokes and the entire committee. My name is Dorothy Bryant, Vice President of Local 44, representing Glennon Middleton, the president. Local 44 represent, to name a few, Department of Public Work, School Health Employees, Baltimore City Public Schools Employees, Animal Shelter, the nurses, the DPW workers, water and wastewater, and many, many more. And many of our members live in Baltimore City. Our members work hard under very difficult conditions, but they depend on having good health insurance for themselves and their families. Our retirees also greatly depend on having quality health insurance. This bill would provide for many, for more transparency for our city unions and the members we represent. This bill will ensure that city employees and retirees continue to have good health insurance. Collective bargaining makes sense, and the union have helped save the city money through the bargaining process. I support Bill 22-0211. Our members support this bill. Our retirees support this bill. And we thank you all for all your support for this important legislation.
Ms. Bryant, your written report, do you have a copy of it, so we can put in the record?
I can make sure you get it.
Okay, thank you. Dominique Graham, ASME, President of Local 2202.
Good morning. My name is Dominique Graham. I am the Local 2202, President of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. And I would like to say, thank you guys for having me. The commonality that retirees and health insurance has are individuals. Individuals who work hard, individuals who put blood, sweat, and tears into ensuring that they service the constituents of Baltimore City to ensure, specifically for our agency, that their necessities are met as far as energy, water, as well as rental assistance. They work tirelessly to ensure that families are no longer in private state, and they look forward to retiring. Since being president, I've had four members that have been with this agency from the start, and they've retired, and they look forward to retiring, knowing that they have healthcare insurance, as well as a plan to guarantee financial stability. It is my word that I stand by and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that our last, Josh, Josh Fannin, President of Firefighters.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes, honorable members of the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. My name is Josh Fannin. I'm the President of IEFF Local 964, Baltimore Fire Officers. I'm here on behalf of my over 700 members, active and retired, their spouses, and their children. Hopefully, without belaboring the point, I wish to echo my union brothers and sisters in expressing our full support in this very important legislation. Health insurance has been an integral part of city employee compensation for over half a century. The procedures for negotiating these crucial benefits have greatly evolved over time to the benefit of employees who are receiving the best possible care, as well as to the city who is finding the most fiscally responsible plans. This is achieved through cooperation. We've heard a lot of discussion over financial concerns from agency reports, but let me be very clear, this bill seeks to codify procedures. very clear, this bill seeks to codify procedures over bargaining, over health insurance, and nothing more. There are no health insurance or prescription drug plans required by this legislation. But of course, we have to address financial concerns. Agency reports raise the alarm on costs, but since employee involvement through the Health Insurance Committee, as documented annually in the city budget reports, costs have plummeted dramatically. Not a few dollars here and there, but by tens of millions of dollars under annual projections. Opposition has focused on their concession of complete and total control over the process as a negative, while paradoxically stating that the Health Insurance Committee and related bargaining procedures work very well. We agree the procedure works very well. That is why we emphatically support passage of this bill, which will write those very procedures into the law. This would benefit all employees, both actives and retirees, for generations to come. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is Ms. Wendy Smith in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I believe she's going to testify virtually.
She's not on the call.
Just for the record, Wendy Smith does support the bill. She's with ASME Local-
Mr. Boston, can you come up to the mic?
Sorry. Yeah, Wendy Smith does support the bill as well. She's with ASME Local 558, which is the city nurses. She's on the school system, so during the summer, she works another job and is unable to make it, but I believe she was trying to testify virtually.
Thank you. So, Mr. Green, do we have any call-ins?
Mr. Lockett, I'm going to unmute you. You should hear, I guess, two beeps, two soft beeps. At that moment, you can provide testimony if you wish.
Good morning. I am Erica Lockett. I believe Director Quentin Herbert has said everything that sums up our position regarding this bill, and that we are in opposition of it. Thank you.
Mr. Randy Hart, I will unmute you. You will hear two soft beeps. At that particular time, you can give your testimony or comment. All right, Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Green. I am a employee benefits consultant, serving the labor groups over the past 10 years. I have been a participant in the HIC process, and I strongly support this bill. A lot of good has been done by the parties, but certain provisions must be codified so we continue to move forward, protect the health benefits for city employees, and importantly, for the city retirees. I firmly support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to ask any of the committee members, if they have any questions. So we're going to start with our Vice President of Council, Councilwoman Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just first of all, for obvious reasons, I have to recluse myself from the vote, but I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
You know, all of us know that healthcare is just a very important part of our lives, even more so now as we continue to get back to some normalcy out of COVID. When I was listening, I guess one of my first questions was, you know, how many meetings did the city have with this coalition, which is very important? You know, the things that we are going through in the city, we need to communicate and have several meetings, and, you know, as members of several committees and Chair of one, I kind of know how, know a lot about the processes and lack thereof of the city and some of these agencies. And that being said, you know, I do stand in solidarity with this coalition, mainly as a reminder that most of these employees and retirees, again, and we can't say that enough, are some of the lowest paid in our city, and when some of them, many of them, do finally retire, they have to get a second and third job to help with their, you know, health insurance, and many other things, just to live a life and enjoy some of that retirement. And as we're going through changes in this city, equity and so many things, you know, I sit back and look at some of the communities that I represent where a number of these employees still reside, and I think we all have those employees in our districts. And because of the time that I have spent on this council, I know a number of these retirees personally that just talk to me, just, you know, venting, so... And then on another note, as a past president of the Maryland Association of Counties, and knowing a number of things that occur and happen in counties, particularly in the metropolitan area around this city, we need to stay in sync and work together with those jurisdictions. And I'll just stop right there, but I sit here in solidarity with this coalition.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for everybody's testimony. Appreciate Human Resources going over some of the issues that you had. I do have a specific question, though, for law. You had mentioned a couple pieces in your report about it not being able to be approved for form of legal sufficiency, and in your testimony, you also mentioned possibly being outside powers of the council. You mentioned all the conflict with the Board of Estimates, and then possibly being preempted, as well as labor relations. Could you speak a little bit more to this position that this could not be rectified by potential amendments? I'm just curious in terms of any potential fixes, and this making it a legal document for our city.
Certainly. There's a lot, a lot to this, but Baltimore City Council only has the authority to enact legislation within its express powers, and the express powers are found in Article 2 of the Charter, but they're really not part of the Charter. They're given to us by the General Assembly and can only be changed by the General Assembly. So I could not find any reference to healthcare in those powers, provision of employee healthcare. I know there's, you know, there was testimony that it is rolled into some of the other language, but I did not find support for that anywhere. We can certainly look again. The other part was, it, to the extent that it establishes a fund and directs that certain monies that are within, that are collected by the city go directly to that fund, that interferes, conflicts with the authority of the city's Board of Estimates to set the fiscal policy of the city and determine what is, what funds that come into the city are used for, either through the budget process or through the supplemental appropriation process. And then finally, there are several provisions that talk about the right to documents. There is no right to public documents in Maryland, other than through the Maryland Public Information Act. There might be other state or federal laws that would enlarge upon that, but certainly a local law cannot enlarge upon the documents that are available through the, from government agencies, other than through the Maryland Public Information Act. So those are the, that's, is that enough detail, or do you have more specific questions?
No, thank you. I just wanted you to walk us through that. I appreciate that.
Councilman Glover, you have any questions? Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to follow up with Councilman Bullock. Can you guys provide us any amenable amendments?
Can you get closer to the mic, Councilman?
Can you provide any amenable amendments that you were thinking about to the bill? Because I hear opposition and then some process issues related to it, and some agreements from both sides, but it appears that you have not offered amendments that would clarify the process. So I would like to see if you had any amendments, or thought about any amendments for clarifying the process as well.
Can you speak-
Yes, ma'am.
The reason I did not propose amendments is because I think that this bill needs to be extensively amended, and I felt that all the parties involved should be part of that amendment process, and not just the Law Department solving the legal problems. There are certainly policy issues, and other things go into this bill being effective. So my suggestion was that we have a work session of some kind, or, you know, put this bill aside and rework the whole thing, and come to a conclusion that may include legislative action or may not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, and I know the Law Department say they had some amendments, but I introduced this bill in March of 2022. It's almost July. If the Law Department had some amendments, they could have presented these amendments to me and this committee. So it's really disturbing, and then we get the agency reports the day before yesterday. Then we got the Law Department report, I guess, about seven o'clock this morning. So the agencies had enough time since March of 2022. If they had some additional amendments, they could have submitted them, and it was a little disturbing for me that it took four months, and before the hearing, the agency reports all popped up all of a sudden. So I think these agencies had enough time to present any amendments that they needed. They were not submitted, and I just want to share that publicly, we have given them four months' time to submit any amendments that they needed. So any other questions from the committee members? No questions? We are going to take a vote. Is there a motion to move the bill? Is there a motion to move the bill? Motion made by Councilman Glover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bullock. Stokes is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Cohen is excused. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Milton is recusing herself, abstain. Councilwoman Porter is excused, and Councilman Torrance? It's four yeses, one abstain, and, well, four yeses, one abstain, and two excuse. So thank you for attending this hearing. This is adjourned.